How's everybody doing for sound? Are you going there Dave? All right. Yeah.
Sure.
All right. It's 6:49 and we'll call the Talent City Council Regular Meeting to order. Go call please.
Here.
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 Here. Here, Mayor Ayers. Here, Mayor, you have a question.
Thank you, Lucero. The next item on the agenda is additions and corrections to the agenda. Anybody? I have one potential, but I have a couple of questions to ask first. This will be regarding Agenda Item 9.3, Discussion of Perspective Land Dedication to the City of Talent. So we, I guess the first question I would ask before we move forward with this agenda, with this on the agenda is, has the applicant, has the applicant withdrawn their application? So we have a hearing on this date specific for the 17th. So I would recommend that we not, that we take this off the agenda for tonight until disposition of that hearing. It seems like putting the cart before the horse to discuss a dedication unless there's something I don't understand about. Council Penamara?
Just for the record, when you asked whether the applicant had withdrawn, the answer was no. They had not withdrawn? I wasn't looking.
That's correct. The applicant has not withdrawn the application. There was a discussion following the planning commission meeting, the applicant came in and asked if the city would be willing to take the, take the land as a dedication to the city as opposed to moving more with the project. So I think if that is the case, either way.
Yeah, is it, is it, that discussion happened after the planning meeting or after the last council meeting?
It was after the last.
That, that makes more sense.
My understanding was it was after the planning commission there and before we actually scheduled it for a, a meeting on the 17th.
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah, my memory was that when we were talking about the public hearing.
I was aware that he was already.
Yes, that's what.
So I knew that he had already.
Our minds are insane.
I mentioned something that this whole thing may go away.
Yeah. So, but at this time, as far as we know, we have a hearing scheduled for January 17th on the same subject property.
That's correct. That's, as per our ordinance, it goes to the city council to then move forward or whatever the council chooses to do.
I think that'll be a discussion for the 17th, but what I, what I just, I just don't want to start discussing dedicating parkland until we've resolved the issue of the application.
Okay, let me just be really, this is what, this, the conversation with that was, this definitely was my concern before. Instead of going through the school process, I would be able to dedicate this to the city as, because we have other projects we want to go through this line better than going through the school process. Going, sitting about to get that, the planning commission.
I appreciate that point of view, but as Presiding Officer, I want, I want to stick with the order of business. And, one second. And so what I'd like to, unless he's formally withdrawn the application, we have a hearing coming up. And it does seem like this would be erroneous, an erroneous discussion on some level until we know. And I would, I would just add that the applicant hasn't heard from the council. So, so it might be, you know, premature. And I don't think any one individual speaks for the entire council. So we should probably get to that point. Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I just wanted to say that I'm, I think what your, your comments are right on and it's, it's not about, you know, like what, you kind of know what he wants to do. We want to make things, you know, easy for everybody. But there, I think there really is a question of propriety and following the rules. And I would not want this council to step, to do a misstep as far as process goes. So that's, that's really the concern for me.
Counselor Clark?
You said?
Yeah, just, you know, it's an interesting proposal. Look forward to discussing it potentially, but it's not, it's not a decision that would be made in a single meeting anyway. There's, there's due diligence and thorough considerations to be made on that, on that subject. And, and and in the meantime, you know, we are under obligation to carry forward with processes as it's designed. So I, I think just postponing that item after the 17th sounds appropriate to me.
I, and you know, I honestly, I feel like we could probably save everybody time because i- if it came before me and I was with a gavel in my hand, I would, I would recommend that we send, send it to Parks. We, we take our recommendations from Parks. We consider these matters as recommendations from our different committees and commissions. Without it, without a recommendation, I'd want to send it to Parks for their input prior to, prior to our consideration. And, and I did read the staff report about not wanting to begin negotiations until we have some understanding of that. But again, that seems, it seems out of order. And I just want to get things back in order and tracking along. And I don't want to wait until the 17th to spring that on everybody. Do you see what I'm saying? I just want to try to save everybody some time here. And I would leave that to the applicant to make a decision how they want it to proceed. But if it came to us on the 17th, I'd make that recommendation. Counselor Byers?
With order of process in mind, do you think it would be better to encourage that applicant to attend this upcoming Parks meeting in January or the one in February?
Yep, that seems like a pretty good idea. Yeah, just from an information standpoint. Yeah, just get the ball rolling. Please let the applicant know it's not my intention, or it sounds like anybody else's intention to kind of stonewall this thing. We're just trying to get it back on track and in line with any procedures that could be challenged at a later date. So, yeah.
Yeah, obviously, the game needs finding out what the community wants and council and.
And respectfully, one more point. The, when the matter came and was postponed prior, for some reason, I don't know, and it really is, it's not, it's not a concern. The application wasn't on the agenda. It wasn't in the packet. So we really had no, we had no application before us that I, that I could see, but I was, I was on Zoom. So I just would make sure that, was it in the packet? All right. Let me rephrase that. I didn't, I didn't see it, but I was, I was not present. So I just want to make sure that we have the application, the, the application number on the agenda and then, you know, the associated information in the packet when it comes to us. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. So with that, I'll remove that item from tonight's agenda and we'll leave it to the city manager to put it on here in the schedule.
All right.
Okay. Counselor Byers?
I think it would be very helpful for the Parks Commission to receive some sort of written report or timeline outline about that ahead of the, the meeting or review so they can have some good follow-up questions.
It might be a liaison, kind of, because it's, it, there wouldn't be anything that they could act on anyway, but just really a general discussion might be, might be.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'll be me doing it then.
Or, and I probably, there might be some information out of tonight's packet that you can advance for. All right, thank you, Counselor Byers. Unless there's something additional you want, in which case they would say, send, don't hesitate to send the, the ask for that. Yeah. All right, with that, are there any corrections or additions?
I believe item five is, is not ready to proceed this evening.
That's right. I think somebody sent an email about that earlier, right? Okay, so we'll be removing 5.1 from the agenda as well. So just for the record, we're removing 5.1 and 9.3 from tonight's agenda. All right, the next item on the agenda is community announcements. Staff, do you have any community announcements tonight?
I do not.
Hector? Counsel? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, since there's a, a committee and commission reports aren't on the agenda tonight, I'm just gonna take the opportunity to tell folks that Urban Forestry Committee volunteers and other community volunteers worked all day on December 22nd and then another half day on December 26th at Talent Middle School and Elementary School doing maintenance on the trees that we planted Arbor Day 2021 or 22 and, and as well as ones that we planted before that at the, at the elementary school. And so that involved, you know, weeding around the base of the trees, liberal applications of organic fertilizer and wood chip mulch, which really gives them a lot of momentum as far as becoming established and vigorous and things are going really well. And the schools are looking more and more beautiful. Follow up to that is we're going to be doing another work party on a week from Saturday, January 13th at 10 o'clock down at the Triangle, the, the north entrance to town adjacent to the gas station. And we do it in the same kind of work on those trees and folks are, will, welcome to show up and help us with the effort and it feels really good. It's, it's not too overly laborious and, and it does a lot of good. So.
Great, Counselor Byers?
On that note, committee and commission updates and invitations for participation from the, from the community. There's a study session coming up before the Parks Commission meeting this month. And you know, it, it's about the, looking at Chuck Roberts Parks and all of the recommended additions and how can we make that a holistic plan instead of piecemeal. And so of course, folks are welcome to attend and listen to the discussion.
And what's the date of that?
The 10th.
On the 10th. Great. At what time?
I believe six, but I would need to look to our city manager.
That's normally when we do it is, that's, this is the regular Parks meeting?
Our Parks meeting starts at 6:30.
Okay. Oh, the study session would, would go earlier. Got it.
I believe it's.
All right. Well, we'll stand by for.
I could be wrong.
Information. All right, thank you. Counselor Byers, any other announcements? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to speaker shirt on non-agenda items. So there, any speaker request forms?
No, Mayor, we didn't receive any speaker request forms.
All right, and the next item was public presentations. There are none. Item number six, a department report, 6.1 departments report. Staff?
Well, there are two, there are two depart, sorry, I haven't figured this out yet. There are two department reports in your packet, both from the police department and from Hector, the community outreach coordinator. And a third that's not in there that I'd like to bring to your attention is a letter, email of congratulations to our community development department for having passed our community rating system recertification at 100%. And so I think I'd just like to compliment Kristen for she and her department's efforts to make sure that we're complying with our community rating system, maintain lower flood insurance rates and was pretty impressed. The other items, you were able to, to read through having to do with our police department and our community outreach and some of the material that's going to be going into our, our water bills next month.
Great, thank you. And congratulations, Kristen. That's pretty exciting news. Anybody have any questions about that? Counselor Clark?
Um, yeah, just wondering that about the bathroom at Cameron, Cameron Springs Park. It was dropped into place some weeks ago and it's presently still wrapped in plastic. We have any information about when that'll be hooked up to the water and electricity and have the plastic.
I regret to say I, I don't have an answer to that question. Robert, if he happens to be streaming, probably would. And I don't know of any of our other staff.
Yeah, Robert?
Robert's on.
Yeah, I'm handing the mic to Robert.
I'm here. Yeah, so it got put in place and we had to hook up the sewer water and electricity. The contractor that we had moved the, to put the utilities in place, the sewer line was not exactly where it needed to be. It was about a foot outside of the compartment opening in the floor. So we had to do some digging to reroute that to get that back over to come up. And then the electrician was there last week to work on pulling the new wire and, and getting that hooked up. So we should have that green tag by the first of next week by PP&L. And then once that's green tagged, then we can unwrap it. I just didn't want to unwrap it till it was fully open. So people weren't trying to, trying to get into it. So that's why we've left it wrapped while we're still waiting for the utilities to get finished hooked up.
Yep, Counselor Clark?
Uh, yeah, well, I got you, Robert. Just, you have an update? Any updates on that bald cypress there on Talon Avenue that has two broken branches hanging from it?
Yeah, I talked to Chris with Canopy Tree Service. I left a message at their office last week when I was on vacation and never heard back. But I caught up with Chris today and he's going to go and remove the branches first thing in the morning. We put some cones out around it, but he's going to go remove the branches first thing in the morning and then do assessment on the tree to, for the tree's health, just to make sure that it's still in good health and we're not going to lose any more branches out of it. Or if we had to do some trimming on it to relieve some stress out of it.
Good to hear.
Thank you, Robert.
You're welcome.
Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, I have a question. I think it's for Hector. I think the community calendar for 2024 is awesome. But I'm wondering, I tried to, I saw that there was a news thing and it went out and there's QR codes. It's all over social media. But when I click the calendar on the website, it's that old thing. And I'm just wondering, is there a way to connect it to the current website where you click calendar or not? Maybe it's a different thing.
Counselor, I'm sorry, I don't understand exactly what you're asking.
I think that I was looking at this today. If you open up the current website and there's a calendar.
Correct.
A link on it.
Oh, I see.
But it doesn't relate to the cool new one that you developed.
I'll look into integrating the two as soon as possible. I didn't think about that.
Okay, yeah, that'll, that calendar's old. It has like the weed team every week that doesn't meet anymore. So it.
If anyone's interested, we have openings on the weekend.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, yeah. Counselor Penamara?
I just wanted to say I'm really jazzed to hear about the, the new generator for, for the police department and how that can be, you know, it sounds like it's a really good one and how can it be used as an emergency center of operations in the case of a catastrophic event. So good, good job there. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, everybody. We sure love hearing from the department heads. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Item 7.1 through 7.9. Is there anything on the consent calendar that anybody wants to move to discussion? Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, 7.8, just because I'd want, I wanted a little bit more background information. If Kristen doesn't mind, on 7.8, uh, on the consent calendar, the railroad thing. Okay. We're gonna do that now. Yeah, so I was very pleased to see that it's grant money that would be paying for this and it's, but it's over $70,000. And it seems to, a lot of attention as to the, you know, the potential development of housing there. When, you know, I think over the years, we've seen for all practical purposes, that might be a lot, it might end up being a dead end because of the property owners and the unpopularity. I'm just wondering, is, is this grant from the LCDC just for that purpose or are, I'm just wondering if, if there's other money that we could do some, you know, housing development in areas that could be more likely, like, you know, the corridor, the commercial corridor, where we would, might get more bang for our buck or more housing at the end of the, at the end of the long study. So I just wanted, I, it's probably needs to be what it, what you have there, but I just wanted to get a little bit more perspective on it.
Well, really the reason that we asked that, would ask if this be done, because I work in the city. We've gotten a lot of interest in our TA4 and TA5, right? Which would be ideal for the development.
Yeah.
Love to do that. And they keep saying, sorry, no, you don't think about that whole UGV area, the railroad district, that has to do with that. So the idea was, working with Josh Bombar was to do a feasibility study to see what really is entailed in getting that developed on the other side of railroad, which is, as we all know, it's going to be two railroad crossings. Railroad crossings shut down. It's, it's a big undertaking. And so he said, if you can, if we can get a study that shows that this is not feasible for the city to move forward, then you know, people will allow us to, you know, make concessions and maybe take some of that UGV out and allow other UGV to come into the city. But they wouldn't let us do it, compare and contrast.
Okay.
Which I really wanted. They said, no, that's out of scope. So we got the new scope and it doesn't.
Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, that's so hopeful. And it reminds me of a conversation years ago before you were with us about the idea where we might actually swap that with, with another area. So it sounds like this is the path that if eventually it does end up that way, this is the necessary path. Am I?
That's what, working with Josh, that's what I've been able to do that. That's the best way to get there.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you so much for doing that homework and getting this before us.
Thank you, Tom.
And if I could just reemphasize, on your page 60 of 70 or page six of the particular task, it says, "The findings of this report will be important for city leadership to understand as they prepare to either double down on the railroad district or contemplate a swap of UGV development areas." So they're, they're cognizant of that. They want to provide you with that information so you can make a determination.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So with that, we'll include 7.8 as part of the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perry Miller?
I move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. There is none. Next item on the agenda is new business, 9.1 is the introduction of the new city manager, Gary Melman.
Thank you. Very happy to be here. Today is day two. And I want to thank Tom and the staff for all of the help they've provided so far in getting me oriented to city systems and procedures. Still have a lot to learn, just getting started. Thanks to the council for selecting me for the position. I look forward to working with you and the staff and interacting with the community. Would it take a moment? You've met, most of you have met her. Introduce my wife, Liang Fung in the back. Say hello. So we're looking forward to be active in the community as well. And happy to be here. And thanks also to Tom for carrying most of the meeting tonight since I didn't have to learn everything that went on to get to the point on the invite.
Thank you. And I just want to say during this transition, how grateful we've been to have you, Tom. I think I said in a, in a meeting in your office that, that we've just been so incredibly satisfied with the experience we've had with you and, and you've done, done this city a great service.
Well, thank you. I, I have enjoyed working with all of you and to the degree that I can continue, I will. In the, in the Navy, in fact, next, in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to a a formal naval retirement, San Diego, but I, there are other occasions where during naval ceremonies, changes of command, one officer taking responsibility from the other, the, the first says, "I stand relieved." And I got to tell you, not only formally, but in, in many other ways, emotionally and spiritually, I stand relieved.
Well, thank you, Tom. And to you, Gary, I, I, I do want to say, you know, I've, I've served the city for over 20 years and, and I've seen city manager applications come through and RV cog engaged in a reference process where they sent out surveys to references and that the references were allowed to answer with anonymity. And we had 20 responses for your, for your references. And it was just a really great showing of support for your lifelong work and confidence in, in your, your work with us here in talent. We were really gratified to see that. And I felt like it was worth mentioning in front of this group, you were, you came highly recommended.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll work diligently to live up to it.
Great to hear.
I believe it.
Anybody else? All right. And thank you for putting that on the agenda. Item 9.2 is professional services contract for Tom Humphrey. Staff?
I'll, I'll take this one.
Are you wearing a mic fighting chair?
I think I am.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Maybe it's in the wrong direction. So talking with Tom as he's leaving, there's some unfinished business that he has been deeply involved with. And there will be some continuing transition items that come up from time to time. We had several items today that we discussed. I got the history on. There are more stacks on my desk and, and drawers around the desk. But I'll, I'll need to talk to Tom about to make sure that we accurately deal with those and give some history on them. So Tom's also involved in the peer grant, very much so. And I've asked him to carry that forward to its conclusion. Would be, it just wouldn't work out well for me to try to pick that up at its late stage in the game. So Tom's agreed to do all of that. We've crafted a couple of agreements. David has and the, one, the agreement that's in the packet, we arrived at a, a rate and a not to exceed amount of $5,000 for each of those agreements. Not sure we'll even reach that now, but we thought we'd have some reasonable limit. So we can Uh, so we can, uh, have a good transition and, um, won't have Tom's hanging around for too long.
All right, well, uh, that's well within your spending authority, so I don't think you need a motion on that. Uh, we appreciate, uh, Tom, you sticking around and uh, making for a, uh, seamless transition and, uh, I think it's money well spent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, um. The next item on the agenda is other business and future agenda items. Counselor Penamriff?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, uh, check in with everybody about the presentation that we had in the study session. Um, my sense of these things is that when the consultants come in and they say, okay, we're thinking about this, that they're writing things down and they're really, uh, looking for direction, um, from us. So this is going to come back at a future meeting, but I'd like to, um, maybe have the chance to, um, you know, follow up on some more specific questions after looking at the materials. So I'm just wondering, is, there's a, um, a method of doing that? If we're allowed to just like email the consultants and say, hey, you know, how, how do, can you show me an example of how do you uh, limit storage units or something, uh, code like that? So some, some technical stuff, some directional stuff. I'm just wondering if there's a way, uh, if it's allowed, uh, just to communicate with the consultants prior to that? Or, um, maybe even get, uh, another joint session together? Um, because I feel like, uh, if we tell them, because we're so different from Phoenix and our objectives um, and our emphasis on affordability and all of that, I think it'd be good to, um, really get some clarity, uh, with these consultants, especially if it does turn into very strong recommendations that then can get grants behind them.
You have any suggestions on that, Derek?
I'd suggest that if you have questions or suggestions, that you, uh, send those through the staff.
Okay.
Uh, so that we can communicate with some consistency with, uh, the consultant. Uh, and that when we get a response from the consultant, we can then convey that information to all of you. And so you're not, you're not sharing information, counselor to counselor, but that we can, um, be the filter and the, um, legal process for conveying that information back to you.
And if I could just follow up, I think it'd be really important to get planning involved in that because, um, they have a lot of, uh, expertise of, and thoughts as well.
Uh, so when you say get planning involved in that, what specifically do you have?
I mean, the planning commissioners, because I imagine Kristen's already really involved in it, staff is already really involved in it, to get, you know.
Involved in the questions and the emails?
Yeah, yeah. So like, if I come up with three questions to drill down in and those and just like put out the word, does anybody else have any questions? And then you can orchestrate it and let everybody know the answers.
I'm hearing you say, uh, maybe staff could reach out to count, uh, to the commission as well and invite questions through your office.
Yeah, and then you could just compile them, shoot them off.
Yeah, well, I'll work with the planning director to facilitate that.
Great. I also like when we have this kind of question and answer through the staff for those questions to be brought back to the public meetings. So that we can all benefit from the same questions and the same answers and so that they're on the record and less.
The answers would be shared, right? To send to all of the planning commissioners and the council. And maybe even just incorporated, uh, as written communication in the next meeting.
Great, oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm really thinking that's kind of homework preparation, so we can come in and point, here's what we want.
Um, okay. Um, anything else? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, draw attention to one of the recommendations that was in the urban forestry committee, uh, minutes tonight. Um, this was a, uh, a motion, uh, to uh, recommend that city council direct staff to contract with a consultant who is qualified in tree codes to update our current codes by June twenty twenty four. Uh, this is something that was, um, budgeted for, um, in our current budget. Um, and it is tied to the work that the committee is doing on developing an urban forestry master plan. Um, and I am aware that they have, uh, that some, some, uh, committee members have done a bit of research. Um, and I can, uh, I can ask them to pass that along to, um, staff about some of the organizations or, or consultants that they are aware of. And, um, and would just like to see this on a, on a future agenda after, um, you know, staff has had a chance to uh, consider it and, and the, um, council has had a chance to think about it.
Um, well, we might cut to the chase. If it's a budgeted item, it's approved.
Yeah.
Um, so we don't really need to direct staff. Um, we can just, uh, prioritize it. Hiring the consultant and then, um, I don't, I don't know that we were a part of the discussion where, was it the forestry's commissions hope that this be, this consultant work with the forestry commission to update the code?
Um.
I mean, code, code amendments are usually handled with the planning commission.
Right, right. And so my, my thought about it would be that, um, that it would go through both, uh, that it, um, you know, could, could, uh, work through, yeah. So would there be, would there be joint meetings between the two, uh, possibly? Or, um, would it come from a, a recommendation from one or the other? And also, you, you know, have, be reviewed by the other as well. Um, I might have to think a little bit about that before I.
Um, as long as I, a couple, I have a couple of thoughts if I can share them. One is, um, that, um, what you're asking for is a consultant to be hired before June of twenty twenty four, not for the work to be completed by June of twenty twenty four. Is that correct?
Hmm.
Because if you're asking it to be, be processed through the forestry commission with recommendations from the forestry commission and the planning commission, um, it would go, presumably go from forestry to planning and then planning would make their recommendations.
Mm-hmm.
I think June is tight.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I, I feel like as long as everybody understands that hiring a consultant and sending them to the work by June of twenty twenty four is what the goal is, and then let it get scheduled accordingly.
Yeah.
Uh, since the recommending bodies serve the council, um, it's, it does, unless somebody sees it differently, it makes most sense for the plant, uh, for the, for the tree, uh, the forestry commission to start and, and then send their drafts to planning and then have planning and forestry make their recommendations to council.
Yeah, um, that, that sounds correct. I think, I think the, um, I think June is, uh, was a target date for completion of the master, of the urban forestry master plan is where that came from. Um, and, um, I think that's why that's in there and I've realized that's, um, quite soon in, uh, city time, but, um, I think, uh, yeah, I think they are eager to see some movement on it.
Yeah.
Especially since it's been budgeted for, so.
So that original date of having it completed by June of twenty twenty four is, was originated a long time ago, right? I mean, that was.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, you know, the, the, uh, the, the urban forestry master plan process and that's where we're working with, uh, um, part of the National Park Service on it, um, has been in process for over a year and, uh, yeah, the target completion date is, uh, next summer.
Okay, I just want, it was that, that date was initiated a while back, not recently, not with this recommendation.
Right.
Okay, I, now I understand.
Yeah.
Um, all right, well, um, uh, I, it's budgeted for, it's approved, um, and, you know, um, I would just ask Gary if you, if you want a motion to reprioritize that item. Uh, we can give you one, but it just doesn't seem necessary.
Uh, at this point, I'm not sure what the city policy is with respect to items that are budgeted in, in the context of, uh, the contracting authority of the manager. So, I, I, I can't answer a specific question, but I'd be happy to work with the counselor to come up with a plan on the schedule. Yeah, and, and there's a procurement process to be followed as well. Um, you know, we can't randomly select a consultant. We, right, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll try to, we'll try to do all of that within that timeframe. Uh, and Tom, uh, help me here, is there a, um, uh, limit on the, there's a limit on the manager's authority with respect to, I, I didn't necessarily worry about that. I can say that tonight, right? I will, I would like to note that, um, as this question's been brought up before, I don't know if you and I talked about it or not, um, uh, counselor, but, um, I noticed in the notes that Jordan left us and Gary's seen these two. Originally, we thought we could amend the tree ordinance as part of this title seventeen and eighteen work that was being done. If that's not, if we've not been able to facilitate that, then we would be pursuing a separate, um, consulting contract. Right, so we need, was, I need to get more information from the counselor and Tom and others on the staff, um, to get a process in place. But if, uh, if the council feels that it doesn't need to come back here because it's budgeted, that's, that's fine.
I don't think it needs, I mean, it doesn't need to come back here for approval, but, but I think what I'm hearing, and I just want to get your take on this, is that, uh, the tree, uh, the, I'm sorry, I keep calling the tree, the forestry commission, uh, wants us to prioritize, reprioritize this item and, uh, for the purpose of them completing their master plan. In other words, that, the notion that title seventeen and eighteen is, is going to be what the process will be, holds up and another entire process and maybe unnecessarily so. And I understand the urgency that's coming from the forestry commission because of the fire and the need to, uh, to reforest our community. Um, so uh, I, I just want to clarify something you said earlier, when you say, um, you want to verify direction to staff in the context of the city manager's contract, is that what you meant?
Within the, within the, uh, I, I, I don't know where this is in the budget, haven't seen it. Uh, I don't know what the practice has been in the past with respect to budgeted items as to whether they come back to the council for action, uh, uh, before we go to a, uh, uh, proposal process. But I, I just need to clarify what, how that all works, uh, before I can provide an answer.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
So, um, with respect to the recommendation, um, it, I, I don't want to presume to say how we should proceed, um, you as the liaison to the commission, uh, to the, to the commission, um, but that makes sense and it sounds to me like we'll get more information in an upcoming report.
I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Great.
Sounds appropriate.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, thanks, everybody. And I'm glad we have took a minute to, to get some clarity.
Yeah, thank you.
Um. All right, any other future agenda items? Counselor Para Miller?
Um, I was hoping that at some point soon, we could get an update about, um, issues on Foss Road. My neighbors have been asking me lots of questions about the potholes and the, um, capital improvement plan. And so I was hoping that we could get some kind of information about the short term goals of that and then perhaps, uh, update on.
I can give you an update on that.
That'd be great, just like for the record, because.
Okay.
I'm glad.
Have lots of feelings.
I want to add to that. In general, the transportation plan calls for the Wagner Street project first, the Foss Street project second, and both of those starting in twenty twenty four. So if you're going to do an update on Foss, would you also do an update on the Wagner project?
We, if Robert is still streaming, he can give you an update on Wagner, um, but I have actually written a letter to one of the gentlemen who's come into the council on more than one occasion, who lives on Foss Road. And, uh, in conversations with Robert, the, the plan, uh, to understand Foss Road, it's not just a, a superficial improvement, it requires replacement of, of, uh, I mean, the whole enchilada would be replacing pipe underground and then reestablishing the roadbed and making it uh, you know, a comprehensive improvement with curb gutter and sidewalk. So that's something that's been in our capital improvements plan. But I think has been moved around periodically and in order to address some of the concerns that more and more residents are bringing up in the short term. Uh, Robert has come up with a plan and is prepared to enact that plan with the city manager's authorization to put a skim coat on it that would probably last for a couple of years, would widen the road effectively and would, uh, kind of reestablish the surface, uh, to make it less, um, of a problem for, for, uh, vehicles, the bus traffic, and anybody who might be, uh, cycling or, or walking along this, along the shoulder. And if, if Robert's still on the line.
Yes.
He could, um,
He just came back up.
Expound upon that. If I may, we, we discussed, I discussed that with Robert today, was going to the same concept, which, uh, in my experience, sounds like a good approach. Um, so we're, we're gonna, we're going to meet again to explore how we're going to fund the scheduling. Um, so, yeah, I, I drove the road today, so I'm, I'm familiar with it. And, uh, it looks like something we need, yeah, there was a bus trying to pass me as I was on the road today, so. I, I had to turn out to let the bus go by.
Counselor Penamriff?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see Robert as well, because he was with us when we did the safe routes to school. Um, had a lot of attention on that. So there's a, a grant angle, um, there that I think is probably coming up quick. But I, I had one technical question and then also please go ahead and add what you can as far as how it relates to the, what we have so far from safe routes to school, is that we, with the skim coat, um, so you said it effectively widens the road. Is that because it goes over the shoulder as well? Um, and I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned about maybe because it's called skim, it makes me think of skim milk. I don't know. I'm just concerned about like safety of kids walking and biking and all of that. So I just wanted to hear a little bit more since Robert's on.
Yeah, so respectfully going back, um, we had a big meeting about safe routes to school. And there is grant funding tied with safe routes to school and RH two is currently working on that grant application right now. The downfall to that is the safe routes to school only is for the surface. So it's for the asphalt, sidewalk curbs, um, it doesn't take care of any of the infrastructure that's below ground. And we have aging infrastructure and an asbestos waterline that one needs to be upsized and two needs to be fully replaced, that we don't have the funding for this exact moment. So, even if we got the safe routes to school grant today, we would still have to hold off until we can come up with the funding to replace the waterline and not put a brand new beautiful road over aging infrastructure. Um, so what we have, speaking with Jeff at RH two and I've talked to Tom, um, what we've came up with is doing a blade patch finish over the top of it, which instead of a chip seal, because chip seal on how rough that road is, the chip seal is just going to deteriorate and fall off. So with a blade patch, it's actually putting down a fresh, thin layer of asphalt over the top of the entire asphalt surface. Will regrade the shoulders off. It will widen the road about anywhere between ten inches to a foot and a half on each side. With that happening, we will go back and stripe and we will actually stripe in a fog line, which will hopefully give a little bit of an asphalt path for people to walk on compared to them walking on the rock shoulder at this point. Um, the idea with this is that'll give us hopefully two to three years. In order to raise the funding, we need to replace our infrastructure under, underground before we do the full scale large project.
Thank you. Helpful. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, it seems like I remember in one future discussion, it was, um, we were talking about the county's plan for their part of the road and trying to coordinate the work, um, so that the city's part was, uh, you know, collaborative with what the county was doing for, you know, uh, for safety or just, uh, mobilization. Mobilization costs or whatever, um, I'm not sure, but, uh, is that part of the thinking? Um, or, or do we know anything about what the county's schedule is for doing their part of it?
The county hasn't came out with a very aggressive schedule at this point, so we don't really have a timeline for, um. Their improvements going forward. Um, but we can still, if, if we were ready to move forward, we would still be able to move forward with the understanding of. Right at the edge of our city limits, we might, we might just stop our project, you know, five feet, eight feet short. To help with the tie-in to whatever the county decides to do. Um, and we can work with the county later on on how we go about maybe splitting some costs on that, um, to make it at work.
Thank you.
I just want to ask a couple clarifying questions, one is the process that you're talking about with the city manager. Scheduled to be done in twenty twenty four, did I understand that correctly?
Yes, yes.
Great, and then, um, I would love to see, uh, somebody write an article for the flash about this. Um, just so that, you know, there's a lot of interest in that, as you know, Robert, and, uh. Um, it would be really good to just inform the entire community in one fell swoop exactly what the plan is. I would, um, I would make it really clear, though, that the temporary nature. Uh, is nothing to be concerned about in whatever way, um, just to, to really explain. That because it wouldn't be, I mean, I, I believe there's been temporary fixes on Foss before, and I just don't, I want to be careful that we don't mislead. People on Foss that, that we're just going to slap another temporary fix on this, but that this one is something to do and, and with good reason. And for the purpose of doing better work in the next couple of years.
Yeah. This is definitely not a temporary fix as we have done in the past, fixing potholes, doing little cutouts, um. If any of you guys have actually been down in the public works yard, are that asphalt that was put in there was done, uh, via blade patching. So, it's not an asphalt, actual asphalt section, it is just, they put it out in front of a grader. Flattened it out, rolled it out and called it a day, and it's been that way for over fifteen years now. So, and it's still in pretty good shape.
That's great, it sounds to me like we can talk about this as like a two-phase repair rather than a temporary fix and then the final fix, uh. In a way that will help people understand that we're, that you guys are, are doing the right thing for that, for that area.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions on that?
No, that's great, thank you so much, and I no, did notice that in Tessa's report, it said that. That is scheduled for the spring of twenty twenty four, is that right, Robert?
Yeah, we've got to wait till, so because the blade patch is so thin. We've got to wait till the ground temperature can stay above forty degrees for a relative amount of time, so that it will adhere to the existing asphalt. Um, so that's, we, we kind of wait till March, April before we really start getting aggressive with trying to get numbers for it.
That's great, thank you. Alright, are there any other, uh, Counselor Clark?
I believe we were going to move on to Wagner.
Yeah, Wagner, yeah.
Wagner Street.
Wagner Street.
Update.
So Wagner Street's another one that's in the exact same boat, it's got aging infrastructure, waterline underneath. And part of the water rate study is to help improve so we can raise some funds to be able to replace some of these. This aging infrastructure we have. Um, and until we can. Until we can replace the, uh, AC water main that's underground, we can't really do a full-scale project. But we are on, so Jackson County does their three-year rotation now for chip seal, crack seal. Um, and blade patching, and this year is our year. So that is one of the road sections that we are going to plan on chip sealing over the top of to give a. Um, improvement to it until we can raise the funds in our capital improvement plan, um, to complete these projects to the full extent.
With all of this being said, can we expect then to see a new capital improvement schedule? I mean, I think the last one we saw was what, five years out, was it five, three or five years out?
We did a five-year, um, we did a five-year plan, um, but unfortunately. Due to inflation and the rise in the cost of everything, it's, were. The price of these projects have went through the roof that nobody could have envisioned.
Um, and we did that last year, so maybe we can see a revised plan this year?
Uh, I, well, I have it, it's set to be redone. Well, it's set to be re, redone in another two years to revise it, but we can look to, I can speak with Jeff and we can look to revise it sooner.
Uh, I'll leave it to you if it's, if, if you guys have it scheduled for, uh, two years anyway, whether or not it makes sense to do it sooner than that. Uh, but, um, given what you're saying, I know that, I, I just want to make sure that we're. Addressing for our community the urgency of some of these capital improvements and, um. Uh, and, and that's one way that we are able to inform the community is by, by being, uh, updated on the capital improvement plan, so. Um, if it stays this way to, uh, for another, for another, until those regular scheduled time. Uh, it might put us even further behind, I don't know, that's just my thought. Counselor Panamorif?
Yeah, just, I'm trying to remember, um, Tessa gave us a really good presentation about water rates. And I'm trying to remember does, um, and we're looking at restructuring the water rates, does that play into capital improvements? Regarding a water main?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yep.
Okay. Alright, good to know, thank you.
I, I'm sorry, we just beat this thing to death, but, um, one more question occurs to me, uh, and that is, um. Given what we're discovering, it sounds like, you know, that the infrastructure is getting in the way of us. Pursuing our capital improvement plan on time. Uh, will, as part of the revision process or amendment process, will you be looking at the rest of the plan to see if that's the case? Throughout our community?
Yeah, really, the, the one section of our capital improvement plan that we're struggling in is the water side. So, funding the water projects, um, is really what's hurting our capital improvement plan as a whole, including transportation. Um, storm, uh, capital improvement. The, the water fund side of it is, is really, it's really low, um. And we can't really complete any of the other projects unless we can do the water along with them, otherwise. We're taking the chance of doing a beautiful, brand-new street and having to dig it up in a year, um, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Alright, good to know, anything else? Alright, everybody, uh, any other future agenda items? Alright, written communications, there are none. Um, and next is the executive session. Uh, so with that, uh, the council will meet in executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero two. H to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed.
All right, so we're on a good second session and there were no decisions. If there's nothing further, this meeting is adjourned at 8:36. Thank you very much for the debate.